Welcome to the February 25th, 2025 City Council meeting, 6:30 City Council Chamber. Start with the prayer. Dear God, today's session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May it be granted at this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be before the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city, make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Suit the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. To a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Rourke.
Here.
Counsel Scott.
Here.
Counsel Yehm. Counsel Belanger.
Here.
Counsel Chow. Counsel Dakota.
Here.
Counsel Getchea.
Here.
Counsel Janess.
Here.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel New.
Here. Yes.
Any moment of silence?
Yes.
Mayors business, section two, 2.1, communication, remote Zoom participation. Motion accepted, placed on file by Counsel Janess, seconded by Counsel Getchea, Alvin Ferris, A.I., opposed, motion passes. Three, City Clerk, 3.1. Mayors of the Art of the Clerk Oversight and Personnel Subcommittee, February 18th, in the City Council Regular Meeting, February 18th, for acceptance. Motion by Counsel Robinson, seconded by Counsel New, Alvin Ferris, A.I., opposed, motion passes. Section four, City Council motions, 4.1, Counsel Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Through you, the manager, I'm sure you've seen this area.
Read the motions first, Counselor.
I'm sorry.
Should I read the motions first?
I'm sorry, you said. You were going fast, so I was trying to move with you. It's like an auction.
Appreciate the speed. 4.1, Counsel Getchea, request City Manager at the Merklin School driveway and parking lot to this spring and summer paving schedule. Seconded by Counsel Janess. Counsel Getchea, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Mr. Manager, I'm sure you've seen this area, and I'm hoping that something could be done either this spring or the summer, because it's a complete tough place to get to with the students. And now, especially with the thaw and freeze over there, it's really protruding through. It's tough to walk. So if this is something that could be done this spring towards probably the summer after the kids get out, it'd be great.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Counsel, we will be working on this. Part of this is Lowell Housing Authority land, so there is an issue there as far as who owns what, but we're going to get to the bottom of it.
So does that mean we'll see some money from them this time?
We're going to try to work together, Counselor, to make sure that that is a better situation for everybody in there.
Alvin Ferris, A.I., opposed, motion passes, 4.1.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could we take under petitions, 8.4, out of order, please?
Motion by Counsel Dakota to take petition out of order, seconded by Counsel Mercia, Alvin Ferris, A.I., opposed, motion passes. Petitions, 8.4. Ms. Lanius, Dennis McCarthy, request permission to address council regarding saving the Smith Baker Center. Ms. McCarthy?
Thank you, Counselor Dakota. My name's Dennis McCarthy, and I live at 216 Foster Street. I want to thank the city mayor, Dan Rourke, city manager, Tom Golden, and all the city councilors for the privilege to speak tonight. I've heard from some, where have we been for 20 years? I want to start by saying that our group, Save the Smith Baker, is one year old and has only grown to support this beautiful building. This building has been owned by the city since 1975, and to my knowledge, there's only been one RFP to seek potential buyers, done in 2017 and terminating in 2018. And at that time, the city made its only offer untenable when it chose to put significant restrictions on it. Also, at that time, the building was not deteriorating substantially in a way that we would have considered tearing it down. 2020 and 2021 saw COVID pandemic, and rightfully, that was our focus. In 2023, there were unhoused people using the building for shelter, and the city took steps to secure the building. Our group, Save the Smith Baker, formed in 2024 when our city in February considered demolition without an informed report stating if there was significant structural deterioration that couldn't be reasonably fixed. This has brought us to today when we have a structural report, and as an architect reading this report, I see five major items that must be addressed by whoever takes ownership to stop the deterioration. First, roughly 600 square feet of floor joists and flooring that need repair or replacement. Second, one supporting column needs reinforcement or replacement. And third, roof slates and asphalt needs to be secured or replaced. Fourth, windows need to be fixed or replaced. And lastly, the brick facade needs some repointing, some crack repair, and 61 square feet of brick wall replacement. In my opinion, these five items should not result in us losing this building. In closing, I would like you to consider a future motion that I've been working on with my city councilor, John Dakota, to put an RFP to prospective buyers such as the Save the Smith Baker group for the repurposing of the Smith Baker, while at the same time, the city is also pursuing approval from HUD to demolish it. And now, if we could, I'd like to play a video clip and a few slides. I know I only have three minutes, so I'm going to just play the slides here, and we can explain it at another date, but I have five slides to show.
You can finish up, it's okay.
So this is the rendering. It actually was done by CBA. And then, this is the beautiful interior as it stood back in 18 with the beautiful stained glass windows. This is a vision for what we see, the auditorium space being used, so it's a mix of seating and eating area. This is a community kitchen that we'd like to see down where the existing kitchen is. This is a workspace that would be a shared workspace, like a WeWork kind of facility. This is a plan that we have for the first floor, showing a bar, cafe, similar to maybe a press cafe or Dragonfly. Beautiful auditorium seating with some spaces around it that could be used as music classrooms, and then, of course, the mezzanine space. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy. Motion accepted, placed on file by Counsel Dakota, seconded by Counsel Yehm, Alvin Ferris, A.I., opposed, motion passes. Return to the motion section of the agenda, 4.2, Counsel Getchea, request City Manager provide the City Council with a report outlining how many water main breaks the city has repaired since July 1st, 2023, to contract it with the city staff to repair, the date of the repair, and the size of the water main repaired. Seconded by Counsel Robinson, Counsel Getchea.
The motion speaks for itself.
Alvin Ferris, A.I., opposed, motion passes, 4.3, Counsel Getchea. Request City Manager provide the City Council that the number of elevators in each facility and school building, the location of each elevator, the age of each elevator, and who's responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the elevators. Seconded by Counsel Janess, Counsel Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. This will be something that we've been looking forward to for some time. I put in this, I filed this motion before, and we're just trying to get these updates because I think it's relevant right now, as we saw the DPW director stand up here and tell us we have 70 elevators in the city and we're not sure of a capital plan. So I think this would be a really relevant motion to try to figure that out, but I would like to also maybe amend the motion to parking garages, too. Do parking garage elevators fall underneath us? Do you know, through you? It does. Because the question in there is, Mr. Mayor, through you, the manager, do we know if all those elevators are working in the parking garages?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. I can only speak to current, currently what I know, they are working. I do know that a few of them are in need of some assistance, which we've been talking about. So as of my last knowledge, yes, but that could change. Counsel Janess, he's a frequent flyer over there, and that could have changed this afternoon.
Yeah, it's been almost a year since I filed this motion back in April of last year. And the question just comes down, as we're getting ready for budget time, can we see what is actually needed, where are they, and where are we going with them? So I thank you for putting this together.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it's okay with the maker of the motion, I'd like to request that we also add copies of the most recent inspection reports to this. Thank you.
Alvin Ferris, A.I., opposed, motion passes. 4.4, Counsel Getchea, request City Manager have the property department, engineering wastewater, provide the City Council with the process to tie into the city sewer system and report requirements for builders, city staff, and anyone else to investigate the capacity before being permitted to tie into the system. Seconded by Counsel Robinson, Counsel Getchea.
Again, Mr. Mayor, I think this is timely as we start to build up the city, and we're starting to see larger projects take on. I think we have to really look at the capacity, the lines that they feed into before we just say okay to these larger developments. I think it's important, as we see challenge fighters doing it currently, and they're having people hold their sewage on site because they can't afford to get rid of it. And I just think we need to understand the capacity as we look at compliance sewer overflows. And in some cases, if you look down on Douglas, and in that area, you're seeing it go into people's basements and stuff like that. So before this becomes a major issue in other areas and we can't tie it to the developments, I think we should have them acquire it as they commit for some of these projects to see what the flow is and where it goes, and can it take on the capacities. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I think this is a great motion. I've brought this up in the past as well at subcommittees. Senaval, we've seen quite a bit of development happening, especially in the area of West Sixth recently. And we all know about 50 yards from that location is a graywater area, frequent graywater area. So I think this motion makes a lot of sense, especially, as my colleague mentioned, we're taking on a lot of large-scale housing development projects. And so with antiquated infrastructure, I think it only makes sense to start figuring out, are we capable of processing, because we're still a ways off with, from the CSO completion, so, thank you.
Alvin Ferris, A.I., opposed, motion passes, 4.5, Counsel Getchea. Request City Manager provide the City Council with a report on all training, professional development attended by city maintenance staff over the past five years, outline courses taken, employees and dates. Seconded by Counsel Janess, Counsel Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I've asked this multiple times and haven't seen this. I don't think that this would be hard to get a handle on and see where it is. If someone puts in for this, it should all be retained in the record. So I think this is just to press the button, and if there is no training, then we need to develop that right away and understand that human capital is probably the most important function in a municipal government to help it sustain the future. If we hired someone back in 2002 and we gave them zero professional development, then we have a 2002 experienced employee rather than somebody who has had professional development along the way that could actually be valuable both as an asset for them and also for us. So I think that, I look forward to seeing this because I'm really curious on what employees have taken courses, is it in their collective bargaining agreements that we can move forward? So thank you.
Alvin Ferris, A.I., opposed, motion passes, 4.6, Counselors New and Janess. Request City Manager work with DEI officer, provide a summary of activities, trainings, workshops, and opportunities made available to city employees, and how these have increased engagement, what policies and practices are currently in place, and how they are monitored, who collaborates to develop set policies and practices, no second needed. Counsel New.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thanks this council for adopting the idea of having DEI officers and the administration for, you know, recognize the importance of that, right? Because not just our city doing it, city across the Commonwealth and the college and university doing that as well, as well as nonprofit, to see the importance of that. I know that since the adoption of the position, what I want to know is that, you know, what workshop opportunity, training that have been made available to the city employee to be able to increase their DEI sort of sensitivities and engagement, you know, onboard, that we have some key activities that show the benefit of having the position, and we know that there's the benefit of having the position. So we want to know also is that the policy and practice that have been reviewed by our DEI officers or that had been under her purview, and who assists and who collaboration she worked with some of the departments, especially the H.O. in term of recruiting, retaining employee. So those are some of the things that I'd like just to have and report, and hint the reasons. And also want to add on to that is that what, if anything, this council can do to help enhance that, you know, that work, the DEI work. So thank you.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like to echo everything that Counselor New said, and also add that I know we're doing a lot of good work in this area. I know that Bell and her team have put the work in here and that the city is seeing positive results from it. So I think it's important that we put it all together and synthesize it in a way that we have something to point to, concrete, and say, this is what we've accomplished by creating this role and investing in DEI. Way to look back and say, this is what we've accomplished, and a way to look forward and say, these are our next goals. Unfortunately, I think the term DEI has gotten a bad rap nationally at this point, and so I think it's important to make sure people understand what DEI actually is and not let people just assume what we're trying to do here. I think when people actually see the accomplishments of the city in this area, you can't argue with it. And it's really the way that we should be going, particularly in an extremely diverse community like Lowell. So if we can put together a report that shows exactly what we're trying to do and how we're doing it, I think that's a good step in the right direction for all of us. So thank you.
Alvin Ferris, A.I., opposed, motion passes, 4.7, Counsel New, Counsel Janess. Request City Manager update the City Council on the implementation and maintenance of vacant commercial properties in the downtown. Once again, no second needed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know, I appreciate the administration and this council for passing the vacancy ordinance. And that's the important aspect of it, because for economic development to happen in downtown, you need to have foot traffic. To have foot traffic, you have to have the upper floor renovated or fixed. The carrot and stick approach on this vacancy ordinance is one that encouraged the property owner to renovate it upstairs, right? We will help you with grant whatever we can do to help you, but at the same time, you're not doing what you're supposed to do, we'll slap you with something, which we should, because those vacancies is what stop the foot traffic, right? If you have the upper floor, we have now the CVS building, what's that called? Yeah, yes. That they're building now, what, 50-something unit upstairs? And downstairs is like a business, and those are some kind of things that we need in the city. So since this ordinance passed, I believe it's about 10 years already, I'd like to see if we can send a letter, if you cannot send a letter to all of the property owners, send to some of them, and start that communication with property owner and say, look, we're looking at you, we're here to work with you, but we also here to look at what your buildings look like as well. So just let's start that process. I know there's a couple of things happening already that, you know, Ali Carter from the DPD, you know, Jawani has worked on the business improvement, the improvement district is going really well, and you do also helping the small business startup and all that. In combination, I think that's going to help the downtown one and for all. So that's why this motion is looking for that. Let's start sending a letter. Let's start it soon. If you don't want to send it to all, send to some, and then start that conversation. Thank you.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, just want to echo what Counselor New said and add a couple of points, which is just, I think our economic development team is doing a great job. I think if you take a walk down Market Street and you look at the storefronts and you think back to what was there 24 to 36 months ago, we've made some good strides on Market Street. And that's the kind of building-by-building, block-by-block approach that you need to take in order to build a healthy and vibrant downtown. And I know we're working on that, and I think a report like this really puts together a concrete plan, lets you see what you're working with, and lets you build that building-by-building, block-by-block approach to increase the foot traffic and increase the vitality of downtown. So I'm looking forward to this and seeing where we can go. Thank you very much.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Thank you for this motion, through you, Mr. Mayor, to City Manager. Two questions. With this downtown, we've discussed this many times on the floor, kind of a carrot-and-stick approach. We're offering incentives in the form of signage or different facade improvements. We've been doing that right along. Are we still continuing to look at the landlords that are pretty much allowing commercial space to sit vacant because of the tax write-off? Are we pursuing what we can do in that instance as well, for one? For two, while these properties are vacant, are we still cataloging the vault index? I know that was something, it was a work in progress, and it's very challenging to try to get into some of these properties, but those would be my two questions. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. There's a lot to unpack here. This is actually excellent motion. It is very timely. We are actually in the process, just on February 14th, I think Assistant City Manager Rose had ensured that the letters did go out. So letters have gone out to the vacant storefronts, but to follow up on everything else that's happening. We are looking at, you know, for instance, 44 Merrimack Street, there's approximately 10,000 square feet, I believe. The last time we spoke, we had a meeting with the developers over there, there's 51 units above. There is the latest room of the central Merrimack Street. We've been working to try to see if that can be reinvigorated, and it's my understanding that that's in its process of being potentially sold to another party. May have happened by now, but I haven't checked the records as of late. But in regards to the vaults, Counselor, we had a meeting again last week, and we're looking currently right now on the northern side, which would be the 44 Merrimack Street side, Cherry and Webb, Beauchamp, if everybody wants to go down memory lane here for a moment. We're looking at ensuring that all of those vaults currently right now, we're working with the developers in those areas. They've been very helpful. Some developers or some folks have not gotten back to us, but so on the northern side of Merrimack Street, I would like to think from Bridge Street right up into Dutton Street, would be looking in the next approximate year. Does that seem about right? But the next year, to make sure that all of those vaults are filled in. There is a real estate issue or challenge that the Solicitors Office is also working with, that would be looking to take that back and then make a sidewalk that would all be proud of. So there's a lot going on on the northern side. Now, to speak to the southern side, to be quite frank, we have not started there. Some people have been very helpful, very accommodating to let our folks in to make sure that those vaults are in good order. We have fixed, I think, assisted one on back Central Street that had one. So all of this is in play, and I think this would be a great opportunity to give everyone an update. And this has been happening probably over the last, well, it's been happening definitely for the last year, year and a half, but we've started to turn the corner on that in the last three weeks as to where we can go. And I have to say, it's the Assistant City Manager from DPD has been doing a fabulous job ensuring that the developers in and around this area are very cognizant, very aware. 44 Merrimack Street is what I bring up, the CVS building that was referenced, that they understand fully what we expect of them. But yet, per this council, we will be moving in a direction to assist them as well. The ownership issues are probably a little bit onerous to discuss here, but it's something that it is our hope that we would, at some point in time, own those sidewalks completely as long as the buildings are appropriately structurally secure. Thank you very much, ACM. So I hope that, this is something we could really dive into, and this has been something that council has been working with, this vacant commercial property tax. I have to, once again, throw my thanks to the ACM over DPD for doing everything that she's been running this, and this is really starting to come to fruition. So this might be a lengthy report, it might be, but it really is things that are moving in the right direction.
Through you, to the Mr. Manager. So I know, like, some properties we've had turnover. Are we capable of tying almost a flag to a commercial location? So for example, the Mill City BBQ property, that business went out, there's a new business that's opening up there. Do we have the capability of flagging that account, saying, we don't have this vault information on file, so in order to get an occupancy permit before the new business settles in, this is required? Because that could possibly light a fire on some of these owners or property owners, you know, in their organization to say, let us step up and do that.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. In short answer, yes. With Mr. DeJesus and as well as Mr. Fuller, anytime that someone comes in to do something like that, they're consistently looking to make sure the occupancy permits are up to date. They're also looking for any of the health inspections, which of course, Mr. Machado knows far more than I do, but that is one of those checkboxes that we, they're always looking at. Most people are very helpful, especially when we remind them from the perspective of the vault, that that is their responsibility. And we've received a little bit more response from people, once they understand those vaults are, they could be potentially financially liable. So there's a lot going on to unpack on this particular piece, but to answer your question, yes.
Thank you, and I look forward to the report.
Alvin Ferris, A.I., opposed, motion passes, 4.8, Counselors New and Janess. Require City Manager explore replicating the deep energy retrofit program that was completed at the Stoklosa Middle School to other municipal buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There is a registered speaker, Mr.
Oh, let the register speaker go first.
Stephen Malagodi. Good evening, councilors. Steve Malagodi, 200 Market Street, just go right over there, representing 350 Mass. of Greater Lowell tonight. We want to thank Councilors New and Janess for this motion. It's a good motion. This deep energy retrofit program is indeed one that should be replicated in as many of our schools and public buildings as is possible. If we're going to meet our climate goals, which we have to do, it's not going to be easy. For instance, just as of yesterday, when I looked at the Deep Green Retrofit website, it was offline. So who knows what's happening with that program? That was a GSA site. On the other hand, the city of Springfield, I understand today, has reported that at least some of their $20 million EPA funds have started, their accounts have started to be accessible again. So, you know, there's just so much chaos and confusion in Washington. This is going to be difficult going forward, but it is something that has to be done. And that's probably going to mean that the Sustainability Division is going to need more resources and perhaps a wider scope of vision, but again, this is really, really important. So thank you, councilors, for this motion. We're in full support. Oh, and on 410, our group is very much pro-chicken. Thank you.
Counsel New?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the city done a fantastic job with the Stoklosa Middle School, and we should replicate that, partly because, you know, LED lighting and enveloping work of the school, around the school, kind of sealed things so the heat stay in, you know, the cold stay out during the winters and vice versa. And so I was told that as a result of that work, the Stoklosa Middle School, since we did that work, the deep energy retrofit, we reduced our energies of the building by 32% in electricity, saved 32% in electricity, 51% of gas, and 34% of our greenhouse gas. Think about it. Put that into money. I'd like to see if someone, maybe Captain Moes can help us do that, come up with a number. I think it's just quite a bit of saving. We should, if we can, when we can, replicate that. should, if we can, when we can, replicate that, replicate that in all the city, municipal city building. On top of that, I may want to add this too, that since the, you know, adaptation of the MBTA zoning overlay, we should, our land board should require developer, or encourage, nice word, encourage developer to, you know, to do a lot of those work, rather than wait 10 years, 20 years later, you know, as condition of permit or site plan reviews of some sort. So I would just encourage the land board to look into that as well, not just the city doing the retrofit on the old building, but the new building that's going to come up in this, you know, the MBTA zoning overlay, half a mile radius from the Gallagher Terminal. So I know that a couple already went before the planning and the zoning. So I would encourage direction from the managers to the land board to make it its condition that that happen. Thank you.
Echoing statements again, Councilor Janess?
Yes. Thank you.
Alvin Ferris, AI, opposed motion passes. 4.9, Councilor Belanger, request City Manager to provide a report on improvements at the Shed Park Fieldhouse, seconded by Councilor Dakota, Councilor Belanger.
Motion speaks for itself, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Alvin Ferris, AI, opposed motion passes. 410, Councilors Yam and Chow, Councilor Chow not being here, request City Manager to have the appropriate department explore and report on potential ordinance allowing residents to own and raise chickens similar to regulations in other municipalities for review and discussion by the entire council. Mr. Solicitor, without the co maker of the motion here, what's, can somebody else second it, or do we wait? Okay. Anybody else want to second it? Seconded by Councilor Getche. Councilor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilor Getche. This motion came from a few residents. It's not asking to create any ordinance, but it just asks the law and the Health Department come up with a preliminary report on potentially allow residents to own and raise chicken in their backyard, similar to other cities in town. I have a resident that she was too nervous to speak, but she asked me if I could read her letters and then submit it as part of the record. Is that okay, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Clerk, to read it?
What you want to do?
Submit.
Yeah, get submitted.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Her name is Deb Price at 173 11th Street, Lowell, Mass. And her comment is that chicken in the city, hello all, I would like to ask for an addition to the meeting agenda, assuming you have a yard with enough space. I would like to ask that keeping chicken be allowed within the city of Lowell. We have a good-sized yard that we easily accommodate a coop and a run with room left over. As far as I know, Lowell is the only city in the state of Massachusetts that prohibits chicken, and with the current situation in our country, being more self-sufficient is looking better all the time. Please take this into consideration, as it could help countless city residents eat better and more reliable in years to come. Thank you.
Councilor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't kid you. I love chickens. I love eggs. I know that the price of eggs have gone up, but here is what you probably never thought of when talking about owning chickens. And I don't mean any disrespect for the makers of the motion, Councilor Chow and Pa Rata Yam, I think the world of them. But I remember in 2013, when this motion came up, and we almost got crucified. But I want to just say what my opinion is. Doesn't mean you have to agree with me, but I did a lot of research on it. Chicken owners often underestimate just how much cleaning is required. Daily maintenance is necessary. Odors and flies can quickly become a problem. They need fresh water, proper nutrition, and they need a secured shelter each day. Chickens come with health risks that many people overlook. Chickens can carry salmonella, e. coli, and even avian flu, bird flu, et cetera, all of which can be transmitted to humans, especially children or the elderly with weakened immune systems, and they're the most vulnerable. I just wanted to say that chickens are easy prey for a wide variety of predators, including raccoons, foxes, and if you let them run free, hawks, neighborhood animals, cats, if you let them free range. And I'm going to be honest with you, my grandfather, who lived in Tewksbury many years ago on Knott Street, he had a chicken coop, and I was four years old, and I was excited about them until one morning I got up and they were all dead because a weasel got in one early morning and killed them all, and it was devastating. And I'll never forget that. Medical issues can be expensive and difficult to manage. Where there's chicken feed, there are rodents, often means dealing with rats, mice, and even raccoons chewing through storage containers, and even burrowing under coops, and that's how that weasel got into my grandfather's chicken coop. Chickens need enough room to give them a proper environment. Lowell is congested as it is. I heard a gentleman go up to the podium and say he's in favor of it. He has a right to his opinion. I love chickens. I see them every day at work. Don't we have enough rodents in the city already? Years ago, this same request was defeated, and it should be defeated tonight. I'm sorry, but this isn't, we don't have a lot of land. It's a problem, and I don't support it. Thank you.
Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. I agree. I think although the intent is well-intentioned, I've heard from some of the residents, and for one, the thing that stood out to me is, if you look around the city, we're not properly zoned or set up to accommodate livestock. I know there's a couple pieces that are grandfathered in that do have livestock on like the edges of the city, but outside of that, it's few and far between. With our density issues and MBTA zoning and all these other things coming into play, priority has been housing, increased housing, increased housing. There's a cost that comes along with that, and to start looking towards increasing housing, but then opening the door to livestock within city limits like this, I think we're asking for trouble. I think we have our hands full trying to provide opportunities for the public with flower and vegetable garden beds. And I think that we're lucky to have great partners like Mill City Grows that manage beds and usable space, but I think to take it a step further and start looking at livestock is just not the right thing to do at this time. So I would ask for a roll call on this, and I'm sorry, I can't support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also really like the idea of having chickens in the city. Having a sustainable food source would be wonderful if we could do that. And I know other cities have done this. Quite a few of them have done it. At this point in time, I just don't think it's a good idea to move forward with it. We have the bird flu outbreak. We just be in rodenticides in public parks. We have to work through how that's going to work within the city. And I certainly think that unkept chicken coops would attract rodents, attract rats. I did have a few illegal ones within my district, and those were the complaints that were brought forward, odor complaints and rodents in the area right around the chicken coops. And the other thing is that we did just start really getting our hand on neighborhood walks and doing inspectional walks in the neighborhoods over trash. I mean, I just don't think we're there yet. I mean, hopefully, maybe at some point in time, we will be, and we'd be able to look at it, but the time's not right now. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we take a roll call, I just want to remind my colleagues that this is just an ask for a preliminary, so please allow the Law Department and the Health Department to come back to this council with their report, and from there, we can vote up and down. So right now, I'm not asking for an ordinance to allow residents to own and raise chicken, but just to study, compare with other cities in town. I have my sister-in-law and their family raising chicken in the backyard. I visit them, and they take good care of it. And just like everything else, Mr. Mayor, that it has a requirement. If I want to add addition to my home, I will come to the city, I pull the permit, and I have to meet all the requirement. The same way, if I want to rent my apartment, I will fill out. And for the livestock, you go a step further, that they like apartment rental, the Health Department, the Building Department inspect it on a regular basis. These are the measures that can be in place. In addition, it also, the square footage of your backyard and per chicken, how many allow based on. These are the other cities in town that we want, as a council, to see what other cities in town do by having the Health Department and the Law Department draft a motion. So I would ask that you allow this, to let the law and the Health Department come with the, with the report before we shut it down tonight. So I'm asking for that that much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor. Roll call.
Councilor Robinson?
No.
Mayor Rourke?
No.
Councilor Scott?
No.
Councilor Yam?
Yes.
Councilor Belanger?
No.
Councilor Chow?
No.
Councilor Getche?
No.
Councilor Janess?
No.
Councilor Mercia?
No.
Councilor Noon?
Noon.
Five, Community Committee for the City Manager, 5.1, motion response A. Butler School driveway in Catch Basin, Councilor Getche?
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Thank you for the report, Mr. Manager. I think it's a really good report. One question for you. If we look into the 2025 road projects, you just gave us an informational project, do we have the same type of listing for the schools? Are we doing like road pavement maintenance to those also, and would they be included in that report, or do we have a separate report for those? Would there be crack sealing and fog sealing and cape sealing and all that?
Councilor, no. We're doing the Bartlett next year. That's something we could include. I'm sure that the retain, yeah, with the retaining wall, and we've been hitting those one at a time, those schools. We've been predominantly concentrating on the roads, but that is something that we probably could add to that list, if you'd like.
I'm hoping that it can be, because I think we can extend the life expectancy of those driveways and paved areas within the schools, that we could do the same thing, and hopefully we can push them out, out years, that will save for the capital plan also. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city engineer.
Good evening. Yes, I think we can, in terms of schools, pavings and preservations and crack seals and other stuff, I mean, if the wish is the city council, we can definitely look into it to add on to the list.
I think it's a great idea, because if we can get more years out of life out of them, we can spend the money in other places. And I think some of them were just redone maybe two years ago, and last year, we started redoing them. And some of them may need some treatment options and pavement maintenance currently, so hopefully we can.
We can look into that in terms of school. If this is the wish of the council, I can absolutely look at different schools to see what type of treatments needed and prolong, and come up, potentially come up with the plans. Won't be able to do it all at once.
Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. You know, just thinking about it with the Assistant City Manager, we have been hitting them, Bailey, the daily, over the past couple of years, but this, I'm sorry, Ms. Chang, I thought you left, but that's something that we should probably put on this menu of opportunity.
No, and I agree that you have been hitting them.
Great idea.
But I think that the maintenance plan is important, too, to put forward, so that we're not just milling and overlaying and just going to the extreme case, and maybe we can extend the longevity of a lot of these schools, or even get more years out of some that are currently there. That's all. And I think the engineer, city engineer agrees with that. Could I make a motion to have a report on the conditions of those schools? Or do we have the conditions at those schools, like we did when we did the road reports? Can we do that for the schools and try to get, are they in condition for cape seal? Are they in condition for fog seal? Are they in?
We have to, we don't have the inventory. I'm happy to look into it and start that database to get going.
I'm sorry to give you more work.
That's okay.
But thank you.
Councilor Scott?
Thank you. And I had a similar question, as Councilor Getche, I guess, around the catch basins that were at the Butler School. At the same time, I also had called some into Aaron Fox, probably six or seven of them that were really collapsed into the road. Thank you to Aaron. I mean, they were repaired very promptly. But just, my question is around the plan, like, you know, are people seeing them like that and reporting them, you know, when they're going around through the neighborhoods, the DPW workers? I mean, they were pretty bad, and he agreed that they needed to be repaired right away. So I guess I'm asking why they're not being, you know, evaluated to begin with.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Council, we can have that discussion about the catch basins, but typically what wastewater has done is when you find five or six or seven in a particular area, then they mobilize into that particular area to make that happen. Going out chasing, and I know how important it is. We don't want anyone, especially people parking their cars and having a problem there. So I would encourage everybody to, you know, to continue to bring them in, bring in the notice. And what happens essentially is wastewater goes out, make sure they have enough for a day's work, if you would, to make sure they hit everything in one area at the same time. That's been the plan. There could be a better plan for that, but that's essentially what they've been doing, so they're not driving back and forth through the city, hitting it in different areas.
Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. I noticed that, I mean, especially this time of year now, from the plowing, we find a lot of breaks around manhole covers and basins. The plow grabs one of the frames, next thing you know, it breaks the asphalt around it. They start to settle, and that's one problem. Also, another thing to consider, if we're looking to get an inventory on those catch basins and manhole covers that might need work, I know that there's been a strong push. When we go out and start cleaning the basins with the vac on, maybe that's a time also to catalog those that are in need of repair while they're out there cleaning the basins and manholes, because they're out at the site anyways. That way, they can compile a working list. So I think we already have people that are getting out there putting sets of eyes on these potential problems. Thank you.
Motion response B. Tree Committee, Councilor Getche?
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I thank you again, Mr. Manager, for this report, but I think there's a little bit of confusion when you start reading through it. I knew that there was an ordinance that the Conservation Commission provided, the services of the tree board under their jurisdiction, but this was more of a citizens committee that would be put together and not touch into that and give you information and provide it, a different type of oversight to them. Because I don't think our Conservation Commission actually does the trees that are not within certain areas. And that's really where the crossover comes in, and this would actually work. When you look at it, it says the purpose of this giant two-fold, to establish a community-based urban forestry committee, to engage residents, and expand the city's capacity to protect, maintain, and grow its urban forest, and number two, to develop an urban forest website that can be used to share updates and recruit volunteers. This is from a grant kickoff. It shouldn't cost us any money to have people come in and volunteer as a tree committee. Most communities have them, and they're from just residents who are very engaged in this process. And I think that that's what the point was. The point was to have a citizens committee and then give valuable information to the city, not try to get grants and make things happen that way. I mean, the grants usually come afterwards, when you start doing long tree inventories and starting looking at that. And in here also, I didn't see anywhere where it said that we have certified arborist. So that's the other question. Is it really, didn't play too?
Supposes?
Thank you, Mayor Rourke, and thank you for the questions, Councilor Getche. I think, you know, you make a very valid point in terms of engaging our citizenry to really help us to grow and develop our urban forests. I think the purpose of the grant is, you know, when you're looking at the current ordinance, you're right, it's under the Conservation Commission. They probably don't do an adequate kind of job for what we're hoping to do in the future, but we are looking to build that capacity for the future. One of the things that's kind of driving this capacity is the creation of an Urban Forestry Master Plan. We completed that through a grant through the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program a couple of years ago, and we want to build off of that framework, where we help to create more tree equity within our different neighborhoods. The goal of that plan is to get each neighborhood up to 15% canopy cover, to help address some of the historical inequities that you see around trees. of the historical inequities that you see around trees, things like urban heat islands, things like our environmental justice and our vulnerable communities. We also want to make sure as we build out this urban forest that we're going to have a resilient urban forest. And that has to do with making sure that you choose the right species for the right places and the right types of climate impacts that we're looking to create. And so that's sort of the framework to start this program from. The reason that we applied for the grant to actually create the framework for the urban forest master plan with this tree committee is so that we're not just doing things the way that we've always done them. We know with the impacts of climate change that we're going to need to think differently about how we approach our infrastructure, how we maintain the assets we have, and how we are really looking to put all the pieces together to implement all of those above solutions that we know we need to do to continue to lead in this area. And so I think there's an opportunity with this grant from DCR to create that more robust framework, working with the stakeholders that we have within the city. They're already engaged in a lot of the work around trees, working with our partners and educational institutes. And I think that at the end of that, we're going to have a much stronger framework to begin to recruit people, to your point, from each of the different districts in terms of the city arborist, the certified city arborist, as indicated in the motion response. That is a service that we're currently helping to contract out. The hope would be that over time, we would create that capacity internally. But I think having these as the first step is a good place to start.
Mr. Mayor, I think we're confusing two different things. The city's portion of a day-to-day operation is much different than citizens doing tree, a tree committee. A tree committee is very, very different. We should already have trained people in the city who understand this. And if we look at some of the projects, we can understand even the city staff is not looking at what they're cutting down and what's being replaced because of the cutting down. We need stronger rules and that's what these tree committees do. They look at rules from other communities and say, here we are, we're not infiltrated. Like, when you call for a certified arborist to come here, how long does it take them? If they're in a contract? Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Catherine, how long does it take for them to get here?
I'm not managing that contract. That's managed through the DPW, but I would be happy to follow up and get you that answer.
I think what I'll do is I'll put in a motion because I want to see how much it's costing us for that certified arborist and what we have actually spent on them, unless through you, Mr. Mayor, the CFO knows that answer. But when you start looking at these things, when you run into these issues and you're looking for someone on site, most of these things are already in tree inventories in other communities. And they look at these things, they measure them for free, they do everything for free, and they write up really, if you want to see it, you go to Concord or Lexington or Bedfit and look at their, what their citizen tree committees actually do. And I think we're crossing over what a day-to-day operation is from looking at an engineering plan of takedown of an area and everything versus an inventory and what rules are. If you take down a tree over a certain size, what does that cost you? Is there a cost to it because we have to replace? So there's a, there's a major difference between, we're crossing over into two different areas between citizen helping and whether the city implements in a day-to-day operation, that would be up to the manager and to the council to create ordinances that way. But if not, then it would still be up to the city engineer and whoever's the Sustainability Department. And I agree with everything that's going on here, but I think we're going into two totally different areas. Thank you.
Counsel Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager, this is my concern. In the city of Lowell, do we have anybody in DPW that is a tree man that can get on a lift, a boom and go up and cut some limbs off? Do we have such a person?
Counsel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, through the council, yes, we do.
We do. I think that sometimes we make a big deal out of it. I don't mean any disrespect, honest to God, but if you have people, residents in the city that see a tree and it's on city property, it's not in their yard, it's on the other side, and it's hanging over so that with the snow and all, they see that these branches are like dead and they're gonna impact and carry snow that's gonna probably weigh down and probably rip the wires down. Could they make a call and say to DPW, can you send a guy and put me on the list to have him come down and take that branch down? That's, we don't need an arborist to come here to do that, do we? No, we don't. And I know that it's in demand. I know that I got a call today from a person that lives on Uppam Street that said, gee, I saw Verizon's people come and that limbs that were impacting their wires for their Verizon wires, they came and cut the limbs. Do we have someone in the city that can do that for our trees that are impacting wires? And you're telling me we do. And I don't need an arborist for that, right? Oh, could be a branch coming through the building. I don't know, but, but anyway.
Thank you, Counsel. Motion Response C. Firehouse repairs, Counsel Nune, Robinson, Getchere?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the managers and the chief. You know, this is something that we all been waiting for for some time. We know that some of our house, our firehouses in bad shape and they need to be taken care of because firefighters actually, most of them actually practically live in the firehouse. So this, Mr. Managers, maybe through you, Mr. Manager, to the Chief of Staff, Mr. Keen, or to do, can I ask you that question, Mr. Manager?
Sure. Mr. Manager?
Chief? So this is a seven, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, through you to the council. This report was a 742 report from Colliers. The folks from Colliers are here tonight to answer some of the questions. We have the, we only included the executive summary for the council, but provided a hyperlink just in the event we want to go through it.
Yeah.
This is a very, very big proposal with a lot of photos and whatnot, but we're kind of hoping to, now that we, we need to start to digest, digest what's happening here. But Chief, if you'd like to answer any of the questions for?
Chief, thank you, Chief. I'm not gonna ask, you know, the detail of it, basically. So we do have the owner, project manager, right, Chief? So that owner, project manager will be taking care of all the firehouse in our city, right, in term of fixing?
For the inspectional purposes, and they're also brought on board to oversee the projects.
So do we, do we know, Chief, what's the timeline to, for all those projects? Looking for money now, right?
Perhaps I'll let the manager discuss that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the council. It's once again still starting to digest it. The council received it, I want to say, at the same time the chief has.
Right.
And trying to digest it, I know our friends from Colliers are here, and I know they're probably eager to sit with possibly the Municipal Facilities Board to really start breaking into this, to find out what needs to be done immediately, et cetera. So that's, we are on, we're on path. The chief, the assistant chief has been great on this. So I think which one needs to be done first is probably something that we, we need to table at this time until we figure out from the facilities board. We have a number of, yeah, $3 million, right? Right, $3 million in the capital budget to move forward, as well as monies that were put together from our free cash. So it's not the sense of the money that we don't have, it's a sense of which priority do our friends from Colliers think we need to, we need to jump on first and what can be done sooner rather than later.
I guess my colleague was correct to tap me on the shoulder and say, I thought the same way. To dive into this motion response, you probably better send it to subcommittee and to have more dialogue at the subcommittee, right? So, Mr. Mayor, your call, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure which subcommittee you want to send it into to dive into this, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Which by Counsel Nune sent to municipal building subcommittee, second by Counsel Robinson. Any questions further?
I do.
Counsel Robinson, Counsel Getchere?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, I think the Mr. Manager is correct. It's not fair to the chief or to the OPM to sit here right now and try to even scratch the surface of a 700-plus-page report. I think obviously, we're gonna need assistance working with the administration and the OPM and the fire department to kind of come up with a plan of attack on this. I think this is another massive ball of wax that needs to be addressed. Capital planned out. Obviously, with the increase of new apparatus, I think priority has to go to the houses that are looking to store said apparatus and then come up with a plan of attack from there. But I really appreciate at least the initial step of getting this information made available to the council, to the public, to the fire department as well. And then that way, everyone can get to the table and come up with a plan of attack that makes sense because based on skimming through that 700-plus page, we have a larger demand for, I think, a lot of resources required to go into improvement to this. And it's gonna be spaced out over quite some time, so thank you very much.
Counsel Getchere?
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Through you to the chief or to Collier. I have a couple of questions about the report itself.
So we have with, we have with us tonight the project manager, Angela Campbell, and the associate director, who both put the report together, Anthony Deluzio.
Good evening, and thank you for having us.
We didn't want you to get out of here without answering some question.
That's okay.
So I do have a couple of questions. You evaluate all nine stations?
We did.
Okay.
An overview of all.
So some things that stand out is like the hazmat removal, this hazardous waste in these places and some of the cancer-causing things that they come back and they can't clean their stuff. So to me, that's immediate. That isn't subcommittee-level stuff. That is, okay, here we are, how do we get this stuff done? We have a known that is in there and we need to correct it without a subcommittee, even though I do agree with the subcommittee piece. How accurate do you think your figures are in there for the, each station to do the minimum that you prioritize through?
So at that level, what we've done is we've taken the initial 2018 numbers. We've escalated those to the report 2024 and added on some contingency factor to them. At this stage, professional estimate that you have before you is within 15 to 20% of where your actual costs are gonna be. There are still some fluctuations. These numbers are not based on engineered solutions. And so by that, I mean, yes, we've toured all the buildings. A number of professionals can walk into a building, given its age, and understand that the mastics that were used in those years that these buildings were constructed are very susceptible to having ACM-containing or hazardous materials in them. These buildings have not had a full sample destructive analysis and testing done of every one of those building elements. That would be in the next step.
Okay, so out of the nine, you're comfortable with the 15% delta between the numbers?
Yes.
Okay, so that's about another $1 million on top of the numbers that you already gave us.
Correct.
So when you add up all nine, it's $6 million. And if you added, say, the 15%, it's another million, so it's $7 million. We have three here today, so I think that we need to get moving. And I, you know, when you look at it, right now, you could do five of them under your estimate calculation for, under the $3 million that we have.
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the numbers that you have before you, you're looking at hard cost of construction. We separate two, two elements, hard cost of construction, soft cost, which is design, engineering, OPM firms, testing, all of those things, which are typically another 25% of the hard cost of construction. What a typical municipality would spend on those soft costs. We've gone through, we see the deficiencies in the electrical systems. We have not brought in an electrical engineer to do a full calculation of whether the service is of size for the building that could support the additional retrofit work. That's in the next step that we would do that.
Okay, so even with those numbers, you're adding about another $1.7 million on top of the, the $7 million. So even with that number, you're still under $9 million.
Correct.
Even with the soft cost.
Correct.
So if we have three, we can get one-third of the stuff done currently. Whether, whether you pick either, you take High Street at the $671,000 or you go after, you know, the old Ferry, Stevens Street, and Rogers Street, which are all under $400,000. I just think it's imperative to get that money now spent because with this economy, we have seen craziness in supplies. And right now, when you're looking at the federal government and everything and tariffs and this and that, and you're looking at increases, we're looking at something that's not attainable. But right now, we have something that we can attain that's not as, yeah, wavy as we all think.
You're absolutely right.
I think sending this off to a subcommittee to look at actually pushes out the timeframe. And I take the report as, a lot of it was 2018, and then you just, you know, manipulated numbers to go through and say the same exact thing, because I read it. I read it back then, I'm reading it today. And when you look at this whole thing, we have to get going. And I'm not saying that some of these stations, we're gonna have to put money into, we're not gonna have to replace in out years. I'm saying we have an obligation to the firefighters today to make some of these things right and correct now. When we look at floors that have dirt in them and they need foundation work underneath and it's pouring rain through the foundation, I think we need to get to those immediately. It's not a subcommittee wait. And I think that as you move forward, we've been waiting a long time, and if we don't take some actions, you know, right away, it could be challenging. I don't disagree with even, you'll have to put money in something that you're gonna have to remove eventually anyway, but we're having human habitat within it and there are firefighters. So I just think that we need to get this money moving and finish some of these as soon as possible and not just send it to a finance, joint finance and facility subcommittee or public safety subcommittee. I think we should actually let them move on to $3 million. And if you said there's other free cash monies that can get up there right now, even with a soft cost in the other delta of the 15% that we're not sure of, we're still within, we could do half of this work and give them a quality of life. When you read, I thank you for the report. I think it's just regurgitating what we should have done back in 2018. And when you look at 2018 costs versus today with the, everything that's going on in this, you know, this country, I think that we better get moving now because we're gonna be in for a long haul. Thank you.
Counsel Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to agree with Counsel Getchere. When I'm reading this report and I'm looking at the priority rating schedule, when I look at priority one, critical conditions require immediate attention. How do you interpret immediate attention, sir?
They're posing everyday hazards to the people working in that building.
Then there's no question to me that we use this, Mr. Manager, that $3 million has gotta go right to these priority one stations that really need it. And if we have to, and if we have to go into free cash, and you'll definitely be getting my vote on that as well. Thank you.
Counsel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. And thank you very much to our friends that helped us put this together and the assistant chief and the chief. But just so we're clear, we have been moving forward on other pieces out of that $3 million. I'd ask the chief to put something else together, which I'm gonna forward to all of you today. This was just received, but things have been happening, but I think this is really gonna set us forward with our facility, if the council chooses to send it to facilities, if that's what we're gonna do. But I mean, you know, we do have new kitchen projects going on currently right now. The temporary structure at Lawrence Street, I've been talking to the Assistant City Manager, excuse me, the Assistant Chief about that as well. So a lot of, some of this stuff is happening. I want to make sure that all the councilors know this, and some of that money is being spent immediately. But there is no question that we need to get to some of these houses that have been neglected over the years. So absolutely is happening, but once again, structural repairs on Gorm Street, all of, some of this stuff is happening. I just wanted to let you know that the fire chief, et cetera, as well as this administration, we've been working towards this, and we will probably end up bringing capital, additional capital forward, and that would be in the FY27, excuse me, FY26 budget. And that would be for the approval of this council. But this council has moved forward on a lot of this stuff, and I think we're in a good spot to, to start as soon as possible. And I don't think as soon as possible is in the next six months to a year. I think it's as fast as we can move. We have cash available to get moving. And I do know for a fact, some of these things, which I will share with the council, that has been happening for, for all of us to understand what, what projects are underway in 2025 and what projects have been completed.
Counsel Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I read the report and I was heartbroken because some of these buildings, older than I read the report, and I was heartbroken because some of these buildings older than the Smith Baker, where this council voted to demolish it. But also, my concern that we put men and women firefighters in danger, exposing to the lead and to asbestos and all of that. So, those two priorities, the structural and remediation of hazard material in the firehouse is really a top priority. I agree with Councilor Getchea that we can move on all some of these without having to wait for the subcommittee. And I agree particularly, you know, the contamination removal and the structural, and then the mechanical that can be, the next will be the third, the third thing that we have the manager touch on. I agree that we should use what we have to get started on the series of those three items, you know, health hazard is one of the top priority. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Jess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the report. It's very detailed. I couldn't get through all of it this weekend. I tried. But I agree with what Councilor Getchea said, that there's a lot of stuff here that we've got to go on as soon as we can. And as you said, some of this work is in progress or getting lined up to go. I think that a subcommittee discussion is warranted here if for no other reason than to have a good public discussion of the challenges that our firefighters face every day. I think that this being out in the light and people knowing what we're trying to fix is important. And I think that the subcommittee conversation, it would be great if the administration could bring a companion piece to this report that lists out the work that's currently going, what is slated to go, and what's a lower priority, just so everybody's aware and there's one document that we can all look at and work off of as we, as we work down this road to remediating all these issues. Thank you.
Well, your response, D, fraud alert system, Middlesex County Registry of Deeds, Councilor Robinson.
Thank you, and I think this is good news. I think to see that this is already in place, maybe it's just a matter of advertising it through our comms team, but I'm glad to see that this opportunity exists. Thank you.
Councilor Yeh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report. If I may, just exploring, maybe include information in the tax, tax bill to resident owner, to property owners about register their property to avoid the, to avoid the fraud. So, if that be possible, add on to the tax bill to alert the homeowners of this, of this process that they can register their property. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. Councilor, we have, there are strict rules that would prevent us from doing that. But however, I was speaking with our elections director today, and next year, when we send out census or any of that information, we'll be sending out packets of different information for everyone to, I probably shouldn't say this, but I'm going to, for every other department to enjoy putting a packet, the packet together to get to our residents. So, due to, I think it's Mass General Law? The Mass General Law would not allow us to do that, but there are other opportunities that we will make sure that we take advantage of.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm through you to Ms. Manager. Do we have the, will we have the capability down the road with 3-1-1 to send info out through the 3-1-1 system to people that sign up? Because that could potentially be another vehicle to alert and send pieces like this out, interested in registering to be notified anytime documents recorded on your property. Well, please visit this link. I mean, I think that gives us another captive audience, a voluntary captive audience that might be utilizing the 3-1-1 system.
Mr. Angela?
That is something that we, I believe, can happen, but we also have our comms team working on our business slash community, lack of a better term, elementary newspaper. So, that is, 3-1-1 should be able to do that, no question. But we're really trying to ramp up, as all the council has been in favor of, to ensure that we have additional means of communication to make sure everybody knows. But that's a great idea that we can follow back with 3-1-1 on a reverse, if that'd be.
Thank you very much.
5.2 Information Report, 2025 Roadway Projects. Mr. Angela?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. Councilors, this is obviously the continued improvement of our horizontal construction. This is something that this council has been very active in to ensure that when we're talking about crack sealing, fog sealing, micro-surfacing, rubberized cave seal, mill and overlay, or just a full reclaim. I want to remind, for the edification of the residents, sometimes people are going to look at this list and say, my street's not on there. But there is a lot that goes into this. The RSA rating is one of them, and that's the rating by which is zero to 100. And someone's, you know, undoubtedly going to look at this list and say, my, my street needs to be done. However, the challenge that we have is we need to make sure that the, the construction or the piping for water, National Grid, or anything else sort is in its proper form. What we don't want to do is obviously go to reclaim an entire road, and the reclamation brings a major problem a day later, or a week later, a month later, because we have to change out a pipe. So, we've been working closely, and I want to say thank you very much to our engineer. She's been working very closely with National Grid, where we're working together to make this happen, and also to Mr. Duchesnes and Mr. Fox to ensure that this is the best we can do, right? We want to make sure that all of the substructure or the infrastructure underneath is up to speed so that we can do this. So, I've walked through many neighborhoods, and our engineer knows this, we've looked at it. But if you want to look at this as an, as one example of this continued push to ensure that the roads and the sidewalks in this city are getting done, and it's getting done because of the emphasis that this council has put forth, and I think this is a great piece. There are, there are other things in there. We talk about the cement increase. We're going to be, we're going to be diligent about the difference between cement and hot top throughout sidewalks, and I want to let everybody know that. We're going to be diligent about probably using hot top in certain areas and cement in other areas. So, hopefully, this is a successful piece. Very happy with the amount of work we've been doing, and the localized paving seems to be a big hit, and we're going to continue moving forward. So, if there's any questions about this, feel free. But once again, to, for the edification of the residents, it's not always as easy as just redoing a roadway. We need to make sure the infrastructure underneath is appropriately taken care of and newer. We do not want to be spending, you know, good money and after bad. So, I hope that that is helpful.
Councilor Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Through you to the manager or to the city engineer, I just have a quick question. I think this is great to see as we start moving forward, but in this whole memo that we got, it doesn't include some of the other projects that are actually going to go on at the same time, like the CSO projects, right?
Correct. These, during the CSO project, I've worked closely, sorry, very closely with Aaron Fox on the streets that's happening in Centerville. After it's, after the CSO project's done, how we're going to restore the pavement itself, the roadway itself. So, that's been very tightly coordinated on that.
Yeah, so there's water projects, there's sewer projects that are also included, and they're going curb to curb, and they're doing the whole road at some, at that point. Is Burnside Street one of those?
Burnside Street is currently not on them. Burnside Street is part of the CSO project. It's not Phase One. Phase One is focusing on Centerville, but it is currently, it is still on CSO on the second phase of it. So, it will be, as wastewater is still refining that area, I would know better when they continue to design that portion of the area. Would that be, it was just on the edge of it, right at the edge of the CSO. So, it may, once they finalize, it may come off.
Mr. Mayor? Senator?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the council. In regards to the CSO project, that's really just been released, and some of the later years, we're going to have to make some decisions. But once again, in trying not to waste money in this, in this matter, so I'd say maybe that street might be one of those jump balls where we have to try to do something. But once again, we don't want to waste money on something that's going to be ripped up in a year, two years, three years, and then we're getting into that four- to five-year mark. Should residents really have to, you know, put up with a roadway that is a 20 to a 30 on the RSR? And honestly, councils are having a really tough time with portions of that because of the CSO is going to be so extensive. And also, just the councilors did get back to us about contacting the delegation about trying to increase Chapter 90 monies. That email went out today, and thank you very much to all of you for giving me your thoughts and everything else. We kept it very, very quick and brief about, you know, Chapter 90, et cetera. Also, the water department, we're going to be looking to go to improve the curb-to-curb with what has been happening because, quite frankly, it has not been happening when we've been doing fixes and emergency fixes. So, that is something that is also going to be coming back to you in regards to horizontal construction. But, you know, offline at some point, I'd like to hear what the council is saying, just in the sense of those outer years, it's going to be extremely difficult for some of our residents not to have some type of relief in some of the RSR ratings that are so low. And we could continue that discussion into the, into the future, if that's okay.
Councilor Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilor. One more question through you to the engineer. Do we have more interns inspecting the work done by National Grid and all of these companies? Because when you look at a lot of these roads, and I'm sure you see it, if you go Middlesex Street, you look at the trench that went down Middlesex Street in front of Dunkin' Donuts by Charisma and all of that, most of the failure of that road is from a trench from National Grid or one of them. And when you look at those things, I'm wondering if you feel as though you're staffed enough to prevent these things from happening? Because a lot of times, what happens is someone comes over, they do a job, they're out of there before you're even there. You don't know compaction, you don't know anything, and then within two years, here we are with a road that isn't failing because, it is failing because of the trench, but the trench is small, but maybe 10 feet down the road, it's the failure point because the water's getting in and it's running to that point. And around the infrastructures, as I think it was Council Robinson had said, the manhole covers, I believe wastewater has taken a new approach. They got the rubberized patching kit that they're putting around them. They just didn't get to a lot of them this year, but they're moving in that direction to try to heat them up, put them there, and it will help. But when we look at these trenches that people are leaving us with, they're worse than any road that we've done. And I don't think that's fair when we start putting our hard equity money into this, and we're looking at all these preservation projects that are going on. It's not fair to all of you. You put in all this work, and you watch them come along, and they're like, yeah, whatever. And they cut in, and they do these things. And do we have the resources through maybe UMass Lowell to have people come in as interns? Do we have interns to kind of push down so you can do the other work? Because I don't think people understand what, how big of a city we have and how much infrastructure we have.
Mr. Angela?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Councilor, I want to say thank you very much to our engineer, Mr. St. Seer, Mr. Machado, and UMass Lowell, to be honest with you, because this is going to be the first time in a long time, I would have to say.
Since I've been here.
Right. That we're on the precipice of being full, okay? And that's, that's a lot of leadership due to our engineer, as well as Mr. St. Seer and Mr. Machado, making sure that we're going to be full up in our engineer's office. One of our main concentrations, I was just with UMass Lowell today, which we've had multiple conversations about this, is bringing additional engineer interns in. Last year, I believe we had two?
Last year, we have two, yes.
We have two.
This year's, we're going to be bringing more intern in. Actually, we, there's one of them, high school intern's going to start tomorrow.
So, and so, we're absolutely taking this to the next level, the pipeline with the university, and the fact that the, our chief engineer is going to have a full staff. This is something that's been working, that's been kind of difficult. But once again, this is really happening because this council supported, quite frankly, supported moving dollars and cents. We were not getting people to work for the city simply because they weren't being paid, and they could go to any other municipality or state agency and work for, work for more. But with what's been happening here, I'm very happy to say that I really believe, and you know, knocking on wood here, that this spring, summer, and fall, we're going to be moving in a better direction than we ever have been with our engineer. And kudos to our engineer's office because they really truly have been doing a lot. And to the folks who do dig into the streets, per this council, they're no longer digging in the winter, other than an emergency situation. And that's been helpful to allow our engineers to get caught up from everything that's been happening in the past, and I don't see that changing anytime soon, allowing anyone else to dig other than in an emergency situation.
So, in those emergency situations, are they made to go curb-to-curb for the repair? Or are they just, is that going to be a springtime thing? Or is that something that, because they should have to mill and overlay come springtime, curb-to-curb when you do that? Because you're just, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Angela?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the council. That is something that currently they'd be using cold patch.
Yes.
And then they will be coming back to do it appropriately. Now, curb-to-curb, it would depend, and I may lean on our engineer a little bit more. It would depend on what rating the, the street is in, and are they indeed giving us, there's sometimes a credit back and forth, but.
Yes, for, specifically for, I'm going to put National Grid as one of the example. The restorations, in wintertime, they're going to come in, dig only when there's great one situation, which means emergency, when there's an actual active leak. They will come in and cut, will get notification on the email and say, at this location, there's great one. And then later on, they will come in with an application telling us, and we will put a condition on it. We will allow 60 days, 90 days of settlement first, and then they're going to come back, come back in to do restoration. The restoration requirement is based on the RSR. If it's, if it's Mortarium Street, definitely curb-to-curb all the way. If it's, say, is, we have type B situation, they might have to go to the center of the roadway or to the next joint. We will have to look at, depends on the type of the trench locations and the roadway conditions.
I think we're very lax in this area, and I think that they need to either use flowable fill or go curb-to-curb because cold patch does nothing. It doesn't do anything except not pop a tire. The water still infiltrates through it, it still goes in, it still does undermining that you can't see, and I don't care if the road's raining. I mean, that shouldn't matter. It should be, okay, you dug a hole in the winter and you disturbed the ground. And we've talked about this 100 times at this council, that, you know, at the end of the day, they either should be using flowable fill, or they should be going curb-to-curb because our roads are suffering. Whether the roads already, in, in most cases, it's worse because the road's deteriorating to dig in it in the winter than it is under a road that is done, as you know, because of the way it's done. But I'll leave it at that. I just think we're, we need to get tougher on a lot of things because, especially on that end, because I think National Grid and them understand it, and they're using the excuse of all of these emergencies so they can keep work in the winter.
Mr. Mayor? Councilor Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ms. Chang. I was curious of the omission of Chemsford Street. I know last year that we had done a little piece there in front of Crosspoint, but from Crosspoint all the way to Plain Street, the road is breaking off. It's not even a pothole situation, and I'm getting numerous calls about that, so I just wanted to hear from you why Chemsford Street's been omitted.
Thank you for bringing that up. So, Chemsford Street, the National Grids have a water, have a gas main replacement programs that they planning on coming in and replace from where it start, I want to say, all the ways down to Stevens Street. Once they come in and replace, they actually two gas main there. Once they both are being replaced, we'll come back and do the, do the paving.
Do we have a timeframe on that?
I believe, I have a meeting with them coming up. I believe that's on this year's list.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just one point I'd like to bring up also with, with cold patch on emergency repairs in the, in the cold weather months. Ultimately, it's, we're paying for that because that cold patch, when you get freezing down on the ground, the plows end up going over it, it lifts right out, it gets kicked off to the side of the road. Sweepers or the contractors that we bring in for sweepers are grabbing that. It's additional weight that has to be hauled out. It's, it's additional, treated as hazardous material for the most part with the street sweeping. So, I mean, cold patch in the winter on emergency repairs is kind of a tough thing to be allowing. I mean, I could see absolute emergency situation, but I think the contracts need to stipulate that, you know.
So, this cold patch program is a pilot program. It's not a typical cold patch we get. This is a high-density ones that has been used various towns. So, we have. get. This is a high-density ones that has been used various towns. So we have started with some sort of pilot program to see, and we'll be monitoring it, to see how does it work? How does it stay up in the winter? It has been used in Newton, in Nadeaux, and I've talked to the engineer department over there and DPWs. It seems to be held up. So we have a pilot program with National Grid to see how is it holding up with that.
Thank you. And I would just hope that we could ask our wastewater, when they're back on it, to keep an eye out and see, is this cold patch filling our basins? Because we see it where I work, you know, once that runs off in the spring thaw, you have cold patch filling your basins as well. Thank you.
Samantha.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Some of the excuses that are given are from Department of Public Utilities of what they can and can't do. And we are indeed pushing National Grid to be part of this pilot program. So I wholeheartedly agree with you with the old cold patch in the bag, just dumping it in. But as Ms. Chang had said, we're trying to get beyond that, but still holding them accountable. And it's, quite frankly, it's a lot of repairs from past years that we're trying to do this better. No question about it. But every time we do speak to the, probably the main person is National Grid, it's deep, it's always this DPU pushback. DPU will only allow us to do A, B, and C, which we're challenging them back and forth. But this information is well taken. And trust me, if there's something else that anyone else is seeing, let us know, because we love to fire this stuff at them to find out what else can happen. And to Ms. Chang and to Mr. St. Seer, that's where we are now in this four or five city or town discussion about doing it differently.
Motion to accept a place on file by Council Scott, second by Council Mercia, also FCI, opposed motion passes. Six, ordinance from City Manager, 6.1. Ordinance to amend Chapter 9 Sustainability Council. Need a first reading and a motion to refer to public hearing on March 11, 2025, 7:00 PM by Council Janess, second by Council Robinson.
There's a registered speaker, Mr. Mayor.
6.1.
Yes. Jay Mason.
Thank you very much. I'm Jay Mason, 415 Pawtucket Street. Thanks for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, city council members, manager. I just wanted to weigh in. I was involved in the Sustainability Council from inception for about 15 years. I served as the chair for the past six or seven years. I feel a lot of allegiance to the goals and the mission of that organization. And we feel quite excited and honored that out of our efforts and others, the Sustainability Division was established. Very exciting opportunities. That division's been incredibly successful. From what I've seen, they've done amazing work, bringing in funds, directing information, and focus on sustainability issues, which I find personally to be incredibly important. I wanted to just speak to the two different charters, the charter that I was familiar with, and the new charter that I've seen the example of. There were two issues or questions that I had. The first had to do with a elimination of subcommittees. And it seems like that's no longer in the document. I'm not sure what to say about that. I looked at it tonight to speak to it, and it's not there. So maybe that's been removed. But the other issue, the other part of the charter, has to do with a public comment section. And I just wanted to bring to your attention the language. This is from 941 Meetings, Section B. It says, "Should a non-member wish to speak out on an agenda item, they shall register at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting via the email address. Public non-member comments shall be limited to three minutes per agenda item." I just, I'm fearful that that's going to stifle public debate, public conversation and input. If you can't go to a public meeting and bring up a topic live, I think that's going to manage and slow down the amount of conversation that happens. The Sustainability Council's always been about education, outreach, policy, and to not have the ability to have that kind of back and forth conversation with the public, I think would be a detriment to its mission and the progress of that organization. So I offer my concern about that and hope that that can be taken into account as this thing gets finalized. Thanks.
Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had some calls on this. One of the issues that was brought to my attention was the public comment description that Mr. Mason just touched on. I think it's important to note that that rule exists in this body. It exists in many of the other city bodies as well. The members can always take a vote to suspend the rules, to facilitate a conversation like that. And I think it's important, maybe we should specifically call that out in this ordinance. The other thing that was brought to my attention was that the chair, the current chair of the council, apparently had some concerns because they didn't know this was coming, and there wasn't a conversation. So I would just ask that we refer it back to the manager, so you can have that conversation, maybe edit the public participation part, and then bring us something that everyone, everyone has buy-in on, everyone's looked at, and we can, we can then refer it to a public hearing for there. So I'd like to make a motion to refer back.
Yeah, now, second it.
Council Janess, second by Council Mercia, also FCI, opposed motion passes. Seven, Report Subcommittee, 7.1, Art of the Clerk Oversight and Personnel Subcommittee, February 18, 2025, Chairwoman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Personnel Subcommittee meeting met on February 18. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. And present on road call were myself, Council Belanger, Council Yem. Also, members of the city council were present, Council Getchea, Council La Mercia, Council Dakota, Council Robinson, Council Janess, and Council Noon. Also present were CFO Connor Baldwin, Austin Ball, Assistant CFO Corey Williams, City Solicitor, and Mary Icotti from UMass Boston Call-In Center. There was one item on the agenda. It was a discussion on an update on the subcommittee's progress in creating a new evaluation tool for the city manager, clerk, and city auditor. Mary Icotti, the consultant, gave a presentation on how Call-In Center put together an evaluation tool. She spoke about having clear goals, clear SMART goals, that aligned with the council priorities. Priorities would be one of the first steps in crafting a new performance evaluation tool. The consultant spoke about how setting up quarterly check-ins with employees would be a good way to effectively manage the council's employees. She showed examples of what a new evaluation tool would look like, with an example of some categories the council should review and evaluate. She also stressed that the council needs to set these directives. The Call-In Center offered to assist the council in coming up with these goals and categories by having either a workshop, having a workshop with the entire council, or having smaller groups. These evaluations are tied to pay increases, and the evaluation process is one of the main responsibilities of the council. So it seemed appropriate that the full body should meet to determine the goals, either with a special meeting of the whole council or as a committee of the whole. So a subcommittee motion was brought forward to request the mayor schedule with the city clerk a special meeting of the whole body to finalize the goals for the city manager, city auditor, and city clerk for the coming calendar year.
Thank you. Motion to accept a place on file by Council Yem, second by Council Robinson, also FCI, opposed motion passes. Section eight, we have three, sorry, 8.1, Claim One Property Damage, Motion to Refer to Law Department for Report Recommendation by Council Mercia, second by Council Dakota, also FCI, opposed motion passes. 8.2, Miscellaneous, Maria Feliz, Requesting Installation of Handicap Pockystein at 245 Moody Street, Motion to Refer to Technician Engineer for Report Recommendation by Council Getchea, second by Council Belanger, also FCI, opposed motion passes. 8.3, National Grid, Requesting Installation of One SO Pole on Hayes Ave. Motion to refer a public hearing on March 11, 2025, by Council Scott, second by Council Noon, also FCI, opposed motion passes. 8.4, Already Taken Care of. Section nine, City Council Executive Session, 9.1. Regarding Litigation Update Pursued to Provisions of the City of Lowell Code Orders 50-7, Public Discussion Which Could Have Detrimental Effect on the City's Position and Further to Consider and Discuss Ongoing Negotiations Relative to HCID Possessions 2345, Public Discussion Which Could Be Having Detrimental Effect on the City's Position and Further to Consider and Discuss Ongoing Negotiations Relative to HCID Possessions 11 and 12, and Further to Consider and Discuss Possible Acquisition of Property, Possel 15, Public Discussions Of Which May Be Detrimental Effect on Negotiating Position of the City. Motion to Enter Executive Session and Advert from that Session by Council Mercia, second by Council Noon, also FCI, opposed motion passes. Oh, sorry, road call, Mr. Clerk.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yem.
Yes.
Council Belanger.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Council Dakota.
Yes.
Council Getchea.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Analysis of any, Council Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was met by some very excited young ladies who are involved with this, that I'm going to talk about this Saturday, March 1, at City Hall. There will be a flag raising for the Dominican Republic at 2:00 PM in the afternoon at the City Hall. Everybody is welcome. They're very excited about this. They're going to have music and dance, and it'll be a fun time, and we can honor this group of people. Thank you.
Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not so much an announcement, just a quick thank you to all the city staff who were involved in Winterfest over the weekend. Just a great, great event. Everybody I talked to had a great time and was really excited. Once again, that move of the location back to the heart of downtown, just, it makes all the difference in the world for the businesses, for the participants, and for the visitors. So thank you to everyone for all your hard work pulling that off. I know it's not easy, and it's always touch and go with the weather. But it came off great, and I appreciate the efforts of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.